This conference will now be recorded.
You ready? We're ready to. I follow the number sixteen, fine, Councilman Dorr. Sorry. Traveling to the biggest of places.
Your honor, we're going to be receiving the district guidance that the mayor and the theater council staff have for important decisions that will affect our community and citizens. We also ask for your protection for our first responders. Let's fire up our law enforcement state to assist and reserve our own people, their health and safety. They're ready to deny the promise of the United City that no in short time can conquer the Chinese virus and save so many lives as the Chinese virus. On Thanksgiving this year, we particularly should be thankful for our undercurrented public with so many who sacrificed their lives to establish a technical out over two-hundred-and-forty years. Now we're braver than they can for us and our relatives. As we leave the chamber this evening, don't forget, all of whom we ask in the name of your son, our Lord Jesus Christ. The United States of America and the Republic of America, one nation under God, individual who would better be the justice for all.
I now have the honor of recommending Steve Bliss to fill the empty seats at the Fourth Ward. And that term will expire in April of two thousand and one. Twenty-one. Two thousand and one.
Here's the twenty-one.
Yes. This coming here. This coming here. Is that that name? Anyway, Steve is an active member of the community, has been a longtime resident at the Fourth Ward. If you remember, he was instrumental in leading a group of people to and promote the Heffrich Center, very successful group of people, great campaign. We had a lot of fun with it. We were actually surprised about the support we received, but I think it's all about Steve Heffrich, if anything. So and then before that, Steve has been a longtime park board member. I see his crew there at the park board, which took that first cell sex to the city residents for approval. And then, I don't know how many years later, then took that sunset off of that cell sex so they could have a continuing money supply whenever they can for a great park system. So Steve, what I'm gonna do now is you come on up and Arlene's gonna... Where are you in?
Yeah.
We're gonna vote on this first. We don't have anybody that's gonna vote for you, so.
Okay.
Do you have a motion to approve, Mr. Bliss?
Salute.
All in favor?
Aye.
So then to you. Okay. Come on up. Sorry, bud, there's that protocol on there.
You guys repeat yourself. Okay.
See, sometimes I forget about the formality, if anything, you have to go through voting.
If you will hold back.
Hold up.
Okay, then raise your right hand and repeat after me. I am your name.
I see votes.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
I solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess all qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of City Councilman.
Of course, City Councilman.
Of the cities today.
City today.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of the state.
The provisions of all laws of the state.
Affecting cities of the third class.
Affecting cities of the first class.
And the work of citizens of the city.
And the work of citizens.
And thankfully to be myself enough.
They believe in the government.
Thank you. If you could come find me this way.
Okay. I don't... Don't let it go to your head.
Always a high vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Arlene, a call please.
Lehman?
Here.
Holden?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Cross? Cross, here, and Bliss?
Here.
You gotta get a motion to approve the November second council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
The same for the Assistant Advisory Commission minutes from October fourteenth and BNC Commission minutes from September ninth.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? There's a little delay on the phone. The point of the message, uh, Rayanne Foster?
You guys, how are you? So we have three items tonight. And seven. I'm in line two. Hand over to you. For the shrinky wall, let's give us an annual report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chrissy.
Good morning.
That's it.
So usually when I come to the council, I give you an update that includes lots and lots of members from our previous year. I'm thinking this year, twenty twenty, basically says everything. My presentation this year will be your note for what we're doing and how we're reacting to COVID nineteen in transit. So first of all, the CDC has given safety tips for travelers. It's the same safety tip that you hear for everything. First of all, wash your hands before you leave your house. Then, once you're at a destination, wash your hands again because you've touched things between here and there. Avoid touching your face with unwashed hands. Sound familiar?
Never heard.
Next up, during travel, do try to remain six feet of distance from people that are not in the household. Wear a mask at events on public transit in other public settings. And avoid traveling when you're sick or when you have been exposed to someone with sensitive palsy for COVID nineteen. Last but not least, in my safety tips for all types of transportation, wear a non-stanizing wipe and hand sanitizers in case you're not able to wash your hands. Bring an extra mask and a zip walk bag just in case your mask gets wet or dirty. And avoid traveling as much as you possibly can if you have an increased risk of severe illness from COVID nineteen. Oak Transit has those safety protocols that we've put in place at the beginning of this pandemic to try to fight the spread on public transit. First of all, we are sanitizing our buses like never before. High-tech services are to be cleaned and disinfected frequently and the vehicles thoroughly cleaned at the end of the shift. Secondly, Oak Transit drivers have been issued masks. We've issued disposable masks, we've issued cloth masks, and today we got in our new Oak logo hat. If a driver feels masked and safety hazard while driving, your teammate will look down from their nose but still keeping their mouth covered while driving. And drivers are too for both social distancing on vehicles whenever possible. Even with social distancing, riders are required to wear a mask when touched. We transport a lot of wheelchairs also, and as you can imagine, with your close and personal with wheelchair riders, you cannot maintain social distancing. So we ask that while pursuing mobility devices that riders are absolutely weightless drivers in case they have other needs. And we ask that the driver and client not only to speak during the return process, the return belt must be sanitized after each use. If a rider is sick, they're told that they cannot ride the bus. They're told that it's booked during the scheduling process, and we have flyers on the doors of our buses saying, "If you're sick, please don't get on the bus." And personal responsibility is huge with me. We have told all of our drivers in our office staff multiple times, "If you do not feel well, do not report for work." But they are also asked for a mask when out in public spaces, avoid large gatherings, even if they're off duty, because then they're bringing it into us. Drivers are required to quarantine if they are exposed, and we have had some drivers who've been exposed. None of them can tie it back to anything that they did with Oak, but it was all those things that they had done outside where they did not need social distancing and they were not wearing a mask. And so we have had half dozens of our drivers quarantined during pandering. COVID nineteen and its correlation with public transit. The American Public Transit Association did a study on that and found that there is no direct correlation between public transit and the transmission of COVID nineteen. Of course, everyone says wear a mask. They came to say a conclusion where a mask has been shown to be effective in reducing person-to-person transmission. And their research is showing that whatever the person's doing at the end of their trip is much more likely to cause them to have COVID nineteen than anything on public transit. And lastly, I just want to say that Oak Transit is here for the city of familiar. During lockdown, which started back in March when businesses were closed, Oak Transit was open. We were still transporting people through their dialysis appointments. We were transporting Titans, people out to Titan, so that they could produce food. And we were taking people on essential shopping trips so that they could get food to their home. During the second phase of inspections, Oak Transit drivers continued to provide services for the most vulnerable of our friends and neighbors. So if you see an Oak Transit driver out on the street, stop and say thank you for what they're doing because they actually have been on the front line. And we are required a face mask. So be sure that if you do want to ride with us, that you're bringing your face mask with you. And I thank you for your support. It's always a pleasure to come and be a member. Next year, I'm asking really boring numbers.
Well, thank you for being a part of it, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the second item that we have tonight is financial update from our good buddy, Ken.
All right. Well, you can see there on the screen what the raw numbers are, what they report. We are down just a little bit for this month as far as compared to last year, last November collections, or last September cash sale. And that is, but that also includes the eight cent increase in the parks. So if you take that out or adjust that out, we're actually down five point six percent for the month over month, year over year. But then still fiscal year to date, we're still up three percent, which as you recall, we budgeted two percent. So we're still sixty-three thousand dollars in total money fiscal year to date above where we had budgeted in total for the city. The use tax also fiscal year to date, if you adjust out the extra eight cent, we're actually down point one percent. But again, that is so construction driven that, you know, it will flow back and forth. And last year was a particularly high year, so being close to even with last year is to me goodness. So be happy to entertain any questions, any comments?
Absolutely. Questions? Thank you, Ken.
Okay, so our third item we received is she has missed the appeal of a criminalized business license extension. So on October twenty-first of this year, our council's urging the appeal of the extension of the business license issued to KDP Hospitality LLC out of October seventh, twenty twenty. The business license was later reinstated on November second, twenty twenty, due to the progress made in addressing the likely business concerns, but less than the extension of the license. Since the last decision was stated, the attorney representing the city and KDP Hospitality both represented, the appeal is now on loose issue and there should be a next.
So I need a motion to approve the dismissal of the license. We have a second to approve that dismissal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Chief Flamen, Public Works.
I have several margins tonight. First thing, we have the honorary strategic planning presentation we have tonight comes from the airport. Hold it as you heard there. There's three, a captain, a nurse, and a sergeant on the board.
There you go. Clear your eyes.
All right, people live on the airport.
Thank you. I gotta stick, hold that mic closer to you. There you go.
Okay, the airport handles eight to eleven thousand operations a year, twenty-two to thirty a day, not necessarily company and company, including all the passengers that they train, you can push down for a minute, take that off, it closes like that. And the new system they have in place today is track all likelihood of the test suite, so that's where. Our airport has three runways, eighteen thirty-six and five twenty-three, with less than eighteen thirty-six and sixty-five hundred foot long, which is basically out of all the other airports in our district. George has my airport is on two-two-hundred. RCM under Warrenburg is four-two-hundred. Marshall's five-thousand and close. One of the different hours is the strength of the country. We're already at sixty-five thousand, we're the highest level one of land, I'm, it's just forty-two. So it makes a big difference when you have some more streets on the city, on your flight, or comes somewhere in the surrounding area. Just give him two or three times, get him over the right. That's a big bonus for us. We have sixteen hangars on property that we opened and leased out thirteen of them. Three hundred block hangars, and we have twelve fifteen aircraft, one twenty-nine ground grass. We have extra slots, there's a mission for the children, for shortage, for the children's shortage. Those are all cool, but the winged visitors, please, in the time you want, looking forward in the days. Got a lot of additional big block hangars that are trying along with the runway. Aircraft there, there, there's usually at least one or two, sometimes two and five trees, but it's not a hard one, because it's probably. Well, we're getting the vehicle, a lot of people don't know, allows local businesses with transportation option, which is pretty critical when you look at our area here with manufacturing, most of the companies that are headquartered in places in other states and allows people to travel, give them sun and a day's time versus trying to buy commercial which it takes your days to get what you're going. So they say it's time by sending a big lot, putting two or three slots in that way versus just getting a whole lot of space. Another thing that's very valuable to picking up their job is, you know, manufacturing. You spend breaks, you're down, you're not making a month, so maybe wait till it's a good shift here or most of the places have transportation, but why I didn't consider a few around time, less than one. People look at that stuff and they look at places to come and build businesses in the space, but if they want, then we have to pay the bill. This is where the paper comes in according to the transportation, the impact study. This has an annual amount of impact of three point six. You have to read who that figure gave me, they're counting on the year, the program is not so low. Our goal is to provide a steady, efficient service to all of our customers. Service as much as friendly and productive as possible. It's down this year, obviously, a little bit disinfected. Some were smaller local projects. One of the bigger issues this year will set down, we need to get a lot of, to get about the names, to get them to do it. So people doing these, where they're coming to cut out, it's pretty a shop, it's kind of immediately, I don't know, really people start. Then the Air Force and the FBO, that's one of the areas where it's, it's pretty well already, though, we lack the ability to give a little bit of, like I was explaining. I thought people out, oh, because I thought it was time to go. This is a pretty good, but I said, you know, do that, because it is, but they're real down and maybe sufficient, and, but it was, it's a good, it's a good, that's what we like to provide on a regular basis. Last, then, we've got the sixteen planes, fifteen planes that are there. Every year, they make that minimum stretch, no matter if you apply that, it'll be a pressure, because I do. How to take those planes, go out to the market, and just kind of paint, and it's a cost that they have to pay for my, my, I don't think, but I don't think a lot, to give that to me, it's, uh... In most cases, once you have that status on the CDO, you're pretty much good. What I'd like to see, first off, is getting our aircraft nice. Then we're looking for establishing some type of flight instruction, maybe that plane that, or we could do a mess, and or get flight instructions, or, 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 or maybe if still is possible, again, as we do that, although it might be wild to have advanced air shows, we have something like a real plane, somebody that instructs, you know, you can't make a instruction guide or, you know, a check out flight, see if you want it, that's one way, same name of the business. Having events, giving these, you don't have to see what goes on, small air shows and all that. Another big goal with the jets, the jet tractor, small aircraft is great, big aircraft is better. You know, if you feel a typical small aircraft that's hanging on a field, five foot thirty to seventy dollars a unit, that shit stops in, you're looking at two hundred, it's still off the two hundred, and then it goes up there. You drive a, almost a hundred gallon plane, or, 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 yeah. And that's part of our, of my, I've been a little bit scared of, one part of it. It's very important to do that. One, the jet's a company that they have to be, two, the government because we have a place to be. All we need is to finish up and do one of the other things we don't have, hangar space. We can't, we can't part of the area, you know? You can't get three, four, ten, twenty, other students in there. We're looking on that, with the possibility. Similar services they request by the power unit, a lot of times, you probably didn't spend the various, perhaps, a lot of that, because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to see you, but. Work force. I don't know if we can get any man, I don't know if we're working on it. We got a new aircraft just before I started, which allowed the, the fuel is plenty, it's much faster, plenty of space, all the fuel, we've got plenty of buy fuel that, working with the times, the price might not, which, a lot of us can do it for money or others. Contract fuel options has been implemented, that in general is, they've got, they keep the fly lots, and they have the contract fuel, they get a discount, everybody's got a respect program, discounts the fuel, and that helps us, basically, and then those can be, the fuel hasn't been lost, you look for. The benefits, yes, you got the price a little bit, but on contract fuels, there's, two and a half, two percent for everybody, you know, people who pay that much. So if you want to use the fuel money, contract fuel, you're saving, you're, really, you're not, they're saving money, and you're still making same money. The option, I was able to allow us to, still the most, apparently, they're still on fifth and sixty-five, sixty-five, but in most cases, sixty-five, but it's kind of a lot of things. And a ground power source, a way to get that, that's another, I don't know, there's people that get up, 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 if you're, if you're not. Once, we could get a maintenance program started, too, the same, it wasn't on the road side, you know, the market, and the price, there you go, and you're, you're, and you're done, no problem. And most, all your efforts are federally funded, because if you can't run, you can handle it, and make money, or probably keep it alive, certainly bold, the FAA wants you to have, is to be work, to sustain yourself, or if you're good or not, and you know you know sometimes can, you're supposed to, do anything you can do about it, to, to correct your most time, to operate the, and the expenses, so everybody that's here, they're talking there, I don't know what, uh, maybe, they're, they're, that's what we're looking for, so you work, maybe, yeah, yeah. Advantages, obviously, we're not, we're probably, we're just here to operate, work, and show our communities, operating, and other things. We can be there cheaper, and that is, right, we take care of all the flights, we land, we handle rental cars, which means probably they all were sure that, that, probably down there, but they do a lot, mostly keep all, do their craft, I used to be treated, used to being treated really nice, so, but, except for the plane, where usually they're a little hard, and, but, so, and, I, must be a big deal. General building, we have a small term of building, that we, that, the city, there's a private, really, very small, I'm pretty sure. And back to the middle part of the day, we're also looking at to, been on the list to buy the second, this board, we have a partner, a lot of cheese from the land, the people, they're off, they do the business, they, they, they're, 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 they're , you know, that, uh, also a possibility for another resident stream is to add on there that they can rent white aircraft, you know? Depends on version, some people aren't thinking, some people are, you know, sometimes they don't. Ownership efficiency, cell phone, we got a airport cell phone, so how, when everyone's up.
Final passage.
Okay.
What about please?
Dawson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Lincoln?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Rayson?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Um, there.
None of that's all I have for this one.
Thank you, Jim. Chairman Thomas Owen.
Yeah. One item tonight is an approval for record destruction. We have records in the police department that have reached retention requirements. We need to promptly dispose of them.
There's one thing to approve.
Okay, good.
One favor.
Okay.
Andrew Dawson.
Your Honor, with that, as Johnson being now familiar, I will leave the presentation to community development. The first item we have on it is a presentation from MC Power. We have discussed this in the past about utilizing solar energy within the city. And they have a couple of course this evening if you'll come forward to the mic. Please step closer, yeah, that way you can help better so. Thank you. Good evening.
If you can talk directly into that microphone, our people online are having a difficult time hearing us.
All right, you'll go over the way to hear me. Well, good evening, uh, Mr. Man.
Good evening.
House members. We appreciate your time and, uh, uh, and consideration this evening. My name is Matt Mill. I'm with MC Power companies in Missouri, Louisiana, Missouri. And with me is Jeff Judd who is our senior VP of project development. Our ten years of history, we're very proud of our engagement with our community and our involvement with the community. Our president, uh, Tony Ross, is a pastor, was the pastor of American Press deal. And so, and myself, and myself is their way of saying, are proud to present this, uh, presentation to you tonight. Uh, we are a large solar developer in the state of Missouri. Um, when you guys had the work under your head until the marshal, you'll see the big solar development on the right hand side. That is one of seventeen municipal solar farms that we've done in the state. I collaborated with John Simmons, um, to determine city owned sites that were viable to provide city solar energy or the city to loss of energy costs. Along the way, we, uh, determined four key principles, which one of which is to reduce energy cost for the city. The second one is to take advantage of expiring tax, tax, the expiring rebates from the utility, everything. Um, also, this is a great economic development tool for the city. Obviously, if you want to be able to take advantage of the environmental benefits for our community and surrounding areas. First, what we like to determine and run through the sites and the financials for each one of the sites, uh, that we determined. First one is the Sedalia Water Treatment Plant, which is out of Water Works Road. Uh, this one will be a four hundred KW in size with offset thirty-four percent of the usage there. Uh, the anticipated first year savings for this site will be forty-one thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. For each one of the sites, uh, we're offering the city a cash option as well as an equipment finance option. Uh, the cash option in this particular one would be a cash payment of six hundred thousand dollars. With a rebate from energy for thirty-three, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. With a cumulative lifetime savings of one point four million dollars. The second option, uh, would be a corporate lease option. The lease payment would be forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars a year. That will be a fixed cost. With a rebate, uh, the cumulative lifetime savings would be just shy of one point two million dollars. The second one is, uh, the same facility. This, uh, this water treatment plant has four meters, uh, two of which we have been, uh, would be viable for solar. The second one would be a hundred, would be one, a one hundred KW size system, which would offset thirty-two percent of the usage of that, uh, meter, uh, with anticipated first year savings of, uh, ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. The, uh, the cash option, uh, would be a cash payment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this one. With a rebate from energy for twenty-five thousand dollars. With a cumulative lifetime savings of thirty years, uh, just shy of three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. For the equipment finance option, the yearly fixed payment would be ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. With the rebate would offer a cumulative savings of three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, the next site we identified was the Goodwill Chapel wastewater treatment plant. Uh, this one will be sized at three hundred KW, which would offset thirty-two percent of the usage. Anticipated first year savings would be twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um, the cash option for this particular array would be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There is no rebate associated with this particular site because it's in the central Missouri electric co-op territory. Um, the state does not, did not require the co-ops to offer the solar rebates like they did in the industrial utilities. So this one, this project will stand on its own. Uh, for the cash option, it had a cumulative lifetime savings of just shy of eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Uh, the equipment finance option, option would be thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eight dollars would be the annual payment. Um, with a cumulative savings of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The next one would be the, uh, animal shelter. This one is a quite a small array at sixty KW, we're offset ninety percent of the usage there. Uh, anticipate, uh, first year savings of six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Uh, the cash option would be a payment of ninety thousand dollars. Along with a rebate from energy for fifteen thousand dollars, with a community of lifetime savings, uh, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. The equipment finance option, uh, lease payment would be six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Along with fifteen thousand dollar rebate, uh, would leave a cumulative estimated savings of, uh, two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Uh, the next project would be a lift station at three thousand West Main. Uh, that's a forty KW size system, offset eighty-four percent of the usage. Anticipated first year savings would be four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. The cash option payment would be sixty thousand dollars for this one, would have a ten thousand dollar rebate from energy. Uh, cumulative lifetime savings of, uh, just shy of a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. The equipment finance option would have a lease payment that is fixed, uh, for four thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars a year. Ten thousand dollar energy rebate payment, uh, would leave a cumulative, uh, lifetime savings for that system at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the next site would be the Sixteenth Street Water Tower. Um, this, this one would be twenty KW in size for offset this thousand ninety percent of its usage. Anticipated first year savings for this one would be two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Uh, cash option for this one would be thirty thousand dollars. With a five thousand dollar rebate from energy, would leave a cumulative lifetime savings of a hundred and eleven thousand. Uh, the next, uh, option, payment option would be the equipment finance option. Has an equipment lease of, uh, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, or two hundred and seven. Let's say, two thousand and seventy-six dollars. Uh, with the five thousand dollar energy rebate payments, that would be a cumulative lifetime savings of just shy of one thousand. Uh, the next and last site that we found, uh, was the Downey Drive Lift Station. That would be a fourteen KW size system. We're offset on ninety-five percent of that meter's usage, uh, anticipated first year savings would be two thousand and nine dollars. Um, I would also say that we are working with the public works department, uh, on this particular site to determine the viability of using battery storage in place of a decent generator offset, uh, for battery, uh, for backup generation, uh, in case the power goes out. We're, we're not done with that particular part, but for the solar part of it, uh, we would have a cash payment of twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. Thirty-six hundred dollar rebate, uh, for energy with a cumulative savings of seventy-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. The equipment finance option would use a yearly fixed payment of fifteen hundred dollars. With a rebate of thirty-six hundred dollars of cumulative savings of just shy of seventy thousand dollars. Next slide here is a is an overview of the calculated savings, how they're calculated, uh, for each site of the project discussed. We list solar rate size along with the anticipated year production. The current usage at that site, the usage offset utilizing the solar energy. The utility rate and the anticipated first year savings, which is a function of the solar produced times the current utility rate. And then we also listed the rebate, uh, that is associated with each site once again. The next, uh, page is, uh, is an aggregate of all the sites together. If we pay cash, uh, that would cost the city one thousand, or excuse me, one point four million dollars. With a rebate from energy, uh, would be ninety-six thousand, one hundred dollars. With a cumulative lifetime savings over thirty years, just shy of two point three million dollars. The next one would be the aggregate finance page where it would be financed with no upfront costs. The fixed unit payment for this to, uh, finance all the sites would be ninety-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars a year. Which would be less than the first year energy savings of ninety-six thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. Um, with the rebate, uh, from energy, ninety-six thousand, one hundred dollars, should have a cumulative lifetime savings of two point, uh, seven, uh, million dollars. Um, I would say that also that the, uh, the energy savings year after year are calculated using a three percent utility rate inflation. The national average for utility rate inflation is three point seven six percent. Not always, this is not always every year, the higher course of four years may be go up, but the average of per year is three point seven six percent. Uh, insurance and maintenance is paid for, uh, by the city. Um, uh, I would also say, um, that these numbers, um, can be changed around, uh, depending on what the council wants to do. If the city wanted to, uh, pay for X amount of sites with cash and do the rest by finance, we are open and we can adjust, uh, to whatever is, is deemed best for the city. Um, next steps, uh, would be for the city to internally evaluate economic impact and identify the project scope. Uh, we'll then, we want to do a letter of intent between MC Power and the city of Sedalia. Um, the first, the three months of the project would be all of the development, engineering, and net major approval. Um, and you can look at like the last, uh, three months would be construction, inspections, and commencement of the arrays. Uh, so it normally takes between six months usually for this, from the signing of the letter of intent to, uh, completion of the project. Um, there would be ongoing monitoring, um, for all the sites, so that would be available to the city and we would monitor ourselves. So in case anything happened, uh, storm came through, knocked out four panels, we'd go immediately, so if you come out and fix it. Um, that is the end of my presentation. We appreciate your time. Is there any questions?
What's the warranty of this?
So the warranty, that was answered. So the panels, uh, are warranted for production for twenty-five years. Um, they actually, what, sorry, I have to push you? They depreciate?
No. The warranty, is it a floating warranty or is it a solid warranty?
So, I think the best way to say that, I think, is it's a ten year fixed, but then the production part of it is guaranteed for the rest, for the remainder twenty-five years. But the dark experience that if there's going to be a problem with any of the panels, it's usually within the first two years. It's under complete warranty.
What's the average maintenance cost?
Uh, for this project, so the average maintenance, if we did the, the size project the way that it is presented right now, uh, maintenance costs to the, for the city would be about five thousand dollars a year. But that would do, that would have us come out, clean the panels, do a complete inspection from nuts to bolts, to each individual connection. Um,
That wasn't really a stretch, you're right.
You know, you can, we're doing that kind of to determine the size of the project or find the scope and then we need, and that would be evaluated.
And what's the actual lifespan?
So the actual lifespan of the array is, would be thirty years. The only other replaceable part besides the solar panels would be inverted. Those are, uh, guaranteed for ten years, but we have the option nowadays to actually buy the additional ten years. We'd, we'd be with a twenty year warranty to reverse. Average lifespan is about ten to twelve years right now for the reverse.
What's your cost?
I'm sorry.
What's your cost?
Um, that varies depending on the site. Um, it would be, uh, probably anywhere between five to ten thousand dollars. I think it would probably be a number depending on the size of the rig. Sure.
Those variables and insurance, you have an idea of what that brings.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be minimal. Uh, what's the best way to explain it?
Your existing policy physically has cost and coverage it, so it's almost the initial cost of your insurance. I'm usually saying insurance, if you have to buy it and you don't have it, it's going to cost you about two cents a lot. So you're looking at two hundred dollars. Over that, what's going to ruin for you?
Very minimal cost. Yes, sir. Uh, so after twenty-five or thirty years and the panel, uh, the solar panels go bad, would you people replace those? Or would the city have to pay for it? So, well, that's a good question. I'm going to tell you, with the finance option, after the end of the lease term, the twenty years, uh, your array would be licensed over, given to the city, if you will. And at the end of the thirty years of their lifespan, uh, it would be up to the city, uh, to, to dispose of or to decide to have us come out and reinstall new panels at that time. So we're going to start all over again? Yes, sir. At the end of the thirty years, your rough lifespan of, of your array. But, but also, uh, you mentioned that the city had to pay for the insurance maintenance. So if, if, uh, your solar panels are destroyed, the city will be responsible to replace those? So like, let's say, a, a hailstorm came through, um, and knocked out ten panels. Yes, it, it, actually your insurance recovered. And then if you have a maintenance contract in the last, um, with the five thousand dollars a year I was talking about, in most cases that would actually have us cover the labor, uh, of the questions as well.
How quickly, outdated does a solar panel for every unit back in the valley?
So, I'll ask, that's a, that's a good question. Uh, obviously, over the past ten years, a lot has changed. Um, I guess the way, the best way to explain it, it's five years ago, we were probably selling, you know, three hundred watt panels. And now we're selling four hundred watt panels. So the same size panel is actually putting out a hundred more watts than was five, ten years ago. Um, cost wise, uh, they have continued to come down. I think we're at a point now that it's probably almost as terrible as ever did. Um, if they do go down in cost anymore, the added labor cost will probably make it even out. So, in our opinion, this is a good time, uh, for solar.
And you, and seeing the things though, in twenty years, I, I agree that solar, I think, could just be switched up. It's changing products, twenty years now, seeing what happens in our already, you know, having, it's real, what do you think? No, we're, that ban is no longer made.
Oh, I see, it's kind of our array, you know. Yeah, so we, we would find an alternative. Most, all of, the, the only panels that we sell are what are considered tier one panels. Uh, so we work with companies like LG that are all going to be in business, they're not going to be in place. Uh, if that particular panel that we're using today is not available in fifteen years, they will give us a single panel that will still work in its place.
And is that your cost?
Yes. I'm sorry, what's, what do you think that your cost thing, that the warranty? Uh, so if, it would be prioritized depending on, on, if it was in the first fifteen years or the ten years, then LG would cover. If something happens after that ten years, then it would have to work with, with any cost from there.
Shout to you, uh, there was the snow from the panels.
Uh, most cases around here, it's, it's, it's a new, new point. If, if we get two or three inches of snow, most of it's going to blow off. And what doesn't, the panels make it go, they heat and melt off the rest. It's, it's a new point in this part of the country. If you're up in Michigan or Wisconsin, that'd be different conversation, but hearing is very, very important. Kyle? Yes, sir. So, from the presentation, I will ensure the cash coming, is that the site correct? Is that? Yeah, so is, is what we've been involved in, are we grabbing it? Could we have a name, open now? So, keep it moving or what? Yeah, that's, we have two different options for the mowing. Uh, one would be you, or the city would handle the mowing. The other one would be part of our maintenance cost, what actually costs more. In most cases, it might be best if the city can do the mowing. The only other site that is covered, the only thing that would not be covered is if we had to, like, one of the sites, there's, we want to actually place the array where there's trees.
Right.
And a lot of the, I put like, yeah. And so in a case like that, um, in most cases, a local company, they would, they would remove the trees if they were able to keep the trees or ban it, you know. So they don't waste as much. It would cost, so they, but we're managing the site where, yeah, I think I can handle. If we, I would say that most of it is covered by us. I can't think of a case where it wouldn't, where the site that we can, and of course, before we proceed, we're trying to get all the money that we can correct.
Yeah, and in the case of the, in the case of the trees, um, when we, when we discussed this with Brenda, what she was wanting to do was look to see if we could sell the, the timber. And so basically, we would recruit money instead of costing money to, to give those trees. See, don't know, we, we haven't had the chance to really look at, look at that. So, um, so that's not in, in their cost by design. But, uh, um, really, uh, I, I mean, all of these questions are excellent. What, what we would, what we really had hoped to do is just throw this proposal out there. I'm sorry, there is a deadline on the rebates.
Yeah, so, and that was kind of the things that got us going occasionally. Um, the pie for rebates is expiring. Um, and we have ninety days to put this under contract. Uh, otherwise we'd lose the rebates and it's a very big change in moment impact because they ran out of, there was an eight million dollar pie, if you will. And that, and that money's going to be used up.
So, so the purpose of tonight's presentation is to see if council has interest in doing it. And if, if council has interest in doing it, then basically we would term up some of these numbers. Um, and the, the sign the letter of intent.
Yeah.
So to, so to speak, um, uh, maybe next council meeting bring that back for approval. And then, uh, uh, and then go forward. And so obviously, if, if there's more, uh, in-depth questions or anything that we really want them to, to take a closer look at, we can certainly do that and have them bring that back at the next meeting. Um, but this one was really, is there interest? If there's interest, then I think we want to go forward. But if there's not interest, then we don't want to waste their time.
So, Kevin, let me ask you this, so do you think it's a viable financial option for us within the short term?
Yes, and that was a couple of things that, uh, that we had talked about before. It's just there was some sort of savings assurance deal.
Yes.
So, we're not.
Guaranteeing, well.
Yeah, so, um, and then, uh, uh, and then when you were talking about warranty, there was a percent degradation and it was like point something percent.
Yeah, about one half a percent a year. So at the end of the thirty years, it's going to be degraded like a record of percent, I think, for numbers.
Yeah, that thirty or so.
At thirty.
Yeah. And then they monitor that, that's part of that five thousand. You monitor what each panel is, is producing and make sure that.
Yeah, it's balancing each panel. So if three panels allow, we'll, we'll be able to see.
Yeah, and so that kind of, again, guarantees the insurance, so. So, um.
Then, then bring us up one more question. This can be great. Do you, what is your guideline for replacing the panels? In other words, the actual production that we have coming out of the total model production?
Right.
Exactly right. Correct. What makes it viable to change?
So, Jeff, can you help me with this? So that is actually part of the production guarantee. It's, they take into consideration the, uh, degradation, if you will. And if it exceeds a certain percentage, then that's when they come out, they say, our bad, we're worse.
Okay, you got a percentage figure, you can, you can wait till the percent.
Yeah, in the, in the long term, it's hard to, to actually present it. So that's why we're very conservative with our numbers as far as utility rate inflation, to leave some wiggle room there for the degradation panels.
So, so if I'm understanding this correctly, basically, they're guaranteeing that save. So they've built fluff into that savings number, right?
Correct.
Um, so if, so that they can have some of that degradation and still not, but once they get below that savings, then they gotta.
Number's not right, but it's, that's not it.
I would say this, that another way to look at this is, we've been in business ten years. Um, our average production is actually at a hundred and two percent of what we predict. So if we close your X amount, our loan was two percent higher than that's our average. Better than overpromising, underpromising, overpromising.
So the oldest units are doing, having the same productivity level as, what current units? So, you have sudden or ten years old, right?
No, I, I was personally, no, we're only at ten years old, so we're.
You have some.
Industry has given us now, you can know what, what, what lasts and what doesn't last.
So the chances are, as long as they're ten years old of producing, that's a great guarantee to whoever you purchase the, other municipalities, to whatever you sold.
Yes. I think I, if I'm understanding your question correctly, I think the answer is yes.
I think that's your answer.
Yes, sir. So, so you're going to not only check the array, you're going to check individual panels with regards to the degradation. And the remaining five thousand dollars?
Yes.
Yes. And so we, we, we monitor the array as a twenty-four seven.
Okay. I remember, yeah, all these jobs are pretty stupid, it's too many.
And then, and if, if the array's not performing the way you want, then we come up, check down, then we come out. But we can tell, we can definitely tell when it works out, but by production, with the production load, that's how we know that the panel is not, yes.
Okay, so, so in answer to the question on feasibility, that is why I asked, uh, I asked them to break it down by project and then also do it, uh, cash outs. Because these are all coming out of different funds. And so if, if council wants to move forward, I would present them as individual decisions. And most of them, I think, we would want to do the cash option because of the funds that they're coming out of. The majority of them are coming out of the water department and, and the sewer department. And so both of those are enterprise funds that, that are funded through fees. And both of them do have, um, sufficient fund balance that, uh, that we could move forward with this and then, uh, save the financing cost and.
Once we have a significant cash savings when we do that, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The payback's shorter, uh, with the cash option than it is.
So if the council likes to do this, uh, five percent intent, so we'll, we'll plan for the next budget year to do this? Or we do a budget amendment?
Well, we've got the ninety. Well, we've got the ninety days that we've got to make the commit, so.
Financially.
Yeah, but it, but to pay for it, it will be out of next year's budget. But we'd have to make that commitment to go forward before the rebates expire. So we can't wait till next budget year to make the decision.
So we could make the commitment.
But it is gonna affect next budget.
So that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, and we have to guarantee we're gonna make that commitment in the budget year.
Correct.
So you think you could put the numbers together to make it?
Yes, that's, if council's interested, then I would bring that back for the next council meeting and make my recommendation as to which ones we would do and which ones we would do.
So what's your perspective? Now, I'm just taking a guess.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure.
Do you know?
Well, but I'm still, I figure that if we make this, whether it's intent or we commit to do something.
Yes.
Because you guys, it's not actually a binding contract. What it is, it's basically, it's an agreement that we are gonna go forward and that we're not wasting each other's time yet. And then we'll actually have a EPC contract before that ninety days or so.
So we, what I'm doing is, are we locking those rebates in?
Yes.
Biggest concern?
Because that's the biggest thing we're doing, to lock the rebates.
So we would have to have a, a, some sort of firm agreement before the ninety days?
Yes.
Okay, and that secures then the, uh, the rebate.
The ninety-six thousand dollars rebate.
And we'll know then that the rebates are approved.
Rebates are permanently approved.
Okay.
The whole thing now is, because if we do lose them, then like we, we pass this off until next year. There's a very good chance that we, we, we're living over the twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay?
The, the budget, with this ninety days, the budget takes, takes that past, which is the financial will know at that point.
Yeah.
The nine days, they were setting that rebate at that point.
Mm-hmm. But you won't have a budget adopted?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Kevin has, uh, Mr. Power, uh, submitted some of the municipalities that they participated with, which we can get solid recommendations.
Yes, absolutely.
Certainly, one of them is the county, and.
Yeah.
Well, I understand the county is very pleased with.
And we've also did a, a very similar project to this. Actually, there's two phases for the city, we can give, uh, contact information for them as well.
They have a good relationship with Evergreen.
As good as you can have.
Sounds like a railroad?
No, I'll, I'll always say sometimes they, they look at us as a competitor, we're not a competitor. We're, we're, we're in two different realms, if you will.
Well, they, they need you there, it's right, they need some of the funds that we're dealing with.
Technically, but a lot of times, they want to have control with something like this, they have no control. Uh, so, I, I'm not saying that we have a bad relationship, but it's not, uh, we don't go to church with them.
I'll ask one last question. Do you provide the revenue or make track through the rebates? We, we, Evergreen is providing the rebates, Evergreen is. And so that's why he decided this is the, may not be available.
Yeah, because we know that their funds have already been allocated. And so once these funds are gone, that they will not be replenished.
Is that rate with the co-op, although they don't announce for the rebate, is that rate, a better rate than Evergreen?
Um, actually, so that rebate, so the, the rate to your payment, uh, at the West Far River Plant is actually a little better than what your payment for Evergreen gets, just a little bit. Very good rate against you, to them.
So we?
We also, we also get a rebate from the co-op.
No.
Not a rebate on this, but.
I, no, I don't know. No, we have, but the co-op gets a.
By dividend, yeah.
Dividend. And actually, they got the. Now, is the savings based on Evergreen buying our car back, the Evergreen house? Can they stay in the future, any line of the law?
So, like, if you notice that most of the, like the big ones for sure, who are actually only offsetting thirty-three percent or thirty-five percent. That is, is we, we, through our experience and, and through our data, we know that if we over, we make the array bigger, there's a good chance we'll overproduce. And what Evergreen would pay you back is a void cost, which is basically two and a half cents when you're paying seven cents. So we, we try to make these raises and don't overproduce. For the smaller ones, less than a hundred KW, uh, they're gonna be net meter, which means if we do overproduce, that there is a credit involved with that. Once again, we're trying to make ours not overproduce.
Smaller than a hundred KW or smaller?
Yeah, those can be net meters.
Is that where we would come in with a battery situation?
Yeah, on the list stations, we want to look at, at doing a battery.
Yeah, and we're not far enough along to answer that question right now. But what I, what I see this working, Mr. Mayor, is this would be a, a phase. This would be phase one, I think we're gonna have several different options for other sites, um, battery backup stuff, um, for phase two and phase three.
So this expenditure, what do you anticipate this project over what period of time? I know you mentioned that, but I can't remember. How many quarters was it?
Yeah, the construction for this was a hundred and eighty days, wasn't it?
Yeah, a hundred and eighty days. It's, it's six, seven months from, from the day we start, before making it further.
Steve, are you on board or?
I'm on board, I'm just trying, you know, trying to think all the way in the house.
Okay.
But I guess the last thing, uh, that kind of comes to my mind is that if we, we, to the council, say we're interested in doing business with you, and, and we agree that, how many sites were there? Five, six, seven?
Seven or eight.
But I would say, is it like, we agree eventually that maybe we could be six of these sites? That would be cool?
Yes, absolutely cool, absolutely.
And as a conclusion, that we might have more sites available.
Down the road or, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna get, by any means, we're gonna, engineers fall, project, and some of the time, bright minds will always say, hey, hey, we've done a product like this, and that's what we're gonna do.
Now, now, as I understand, if the, the, uh, the, uh, rebates are allocated to these specific projects, they have to be done by me, so we can't take the rebate from one of these projects and say, no, I want to do this, I want to do a different project.
Well, we've still got an opportunity to pick and choose the products.
Absolutely.
Yes, if we may lose the rebate, some of them we have. Yes, yes.
Excuse me.
Out of all, your turn.
Kevin, there's one last question, I think we need to answer in public session here, is that this requires a little bit of.
Now, those things, Scott, we had a discussion, and we do have solar panels on the Amtrak depot.
Yes.
And they said he would do, they would take his crew up and check and inspect them and make sure they're working or?
That's still true.
Yeah, no charge?
Yes.
Okay.
Do, what do you have, whether we do this project or not, sir?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I would have told me a lot of them recently, well, my wife is shopping, and I noticed the motel, there's a motel out there in DC, and, uh, I saw a panel, I guess you guys sold it. Not only was the motel getting energy, it's making nice home for pigeons. I said to her, that's, and watch these pigeons go in and out.
So that's, that's one of the things that they do, is they clean the pigeons.
Exactly, and well, the nature doesn't really get you off clean enough sometimes. The rain we had the other night, pretty much.
If we have a dry stove, we're.
Councilman Dawson or Councilman Richardson, did you, you guys have comments or concerns?
No, I'm excited to see where it goes.
I don't have anything for.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate you, Kevin.
Jeff?
Okay, the next part I have here has to do with strategic planning. We're gonna continue on here. This time the council of community development, John Timmer, he's got the floor. My parents, thank you, and welcome, Steve. Thanks a lot for the word, and thank you, Scott, who's just walked out. Been very patient with us, given us the calendar, you know, the present, and that came from last year's strategic plan. Keep it a priority as long as we get more information, so hopefully we get more information and for people to. So, I've been allowed out of the ground cover, and I come in here really succinctly and, and it's your role through this. Really want to show you how the department's operating with recent changes and the diversity of the disciplines that we use to do community development. So, real quickly, I think you all know this, so the community development department comprises three areas. Development, Facility Management, Building Services. Development cover is in the redevelopment, business development, town plan, three fifty-three downtown, by name alone, three employees, bringing in steers, and myself. Dwayne Hunt, overloads all the departments, she's providing her skills for, for each of our different disciplines. Facility Management, that's the other campus crews, uh, the daycare facility, facility and building services. And just added that recent change to bring that night on, I think she pulled in official last year. And then providing, providing media for the week by giving code enforcement tasks to the chief of management. There's sixteen employees, including a new position that she created for code enforcement supervision and an additional facilities maintenance program that she provided earlier in the year. Real quick with community development, what is that? Well, that's the bigger picture, it's the comprehensive plan and the brand new campaign, downtown redevelopment, CDBG management, economic development, there is ongoing, just their private office, and she has different prospects, retail improvement, which Ryan will be helping with. New redevelopment housing initiatives, which I'll go into with it in a moment. Incentive programs is directed by either council, uh, the LRS incentive programs. And our incentive policies, which she creates, we always want to make sure that anything we bring to you as an incentive fits within that program first, and then we'll bring it to you. Facility planning, that's something to do with design and construction, our piece, such as we department, cemetery, uh, in the future, maybe the central fire station or replacement station. We handle planning and zoning issues for rezonies. And then nonprofit grant management for CDBG grants, which includes this year's SFC city patients. Want to repeat something I do every year, and I just want to remind you that from a municipal perspective, work for the city, work closely with economic development officials in order to, A, create jobs, B, stimulate local economy, increase our path space, so we can provide critical city services, and maintain improved city appearance, which is viable for higher improvement efforts. To create economic variety, and encourage that economic variety, it is that wide range of businesses and industries makes it more attractive to residential and economic development prospects. Versatile businesses teach us to put our eyes in one basket, which we see happening in so many small communities across the world. Uh, whether somebody, I don't want to be in other cities, because they're, they all do a hard, they all do hard work when they try to put the jobs in their town, but we see it happen. You put all your eyes in one industry, and that industry changes, you retire, uh, shoe factories, we don't have shoe factories in all of our cities anymore. Things happen, we don't want our eyes in one basket. Uh, our community is attracted to economic development prospects when we provide high-quality infrastructure. Again, this is where community development looks like all those other departments. They all have to come together to provide water, super solid waste, transportation options, street selected, natural gas, super important, professional fire protection, that's a huge impact on our economic development efforts. And effectively, professional workforce, and of course, a healthy living environment, which others than we look at for housing. So the other housing, twenty twenty-one, we have the channels that we've known about now for a couple of years with imports, we look for efficient community. We've got to be able to provide houses for not only frontline workers, but rental management, couple management, the owners of businesses, the owners of factories, the owners of model shop shops downtown, owners of restaurants on highways. And we're not doing the greatest job in that right now. I hear from realtors that there's definitely big gaps in our housing, uh, product. And we need to figure out how to get through that. Uh, because without that, we need to look at housing initiatives. We've been talking about this for two years now, the three fifty-three redevelopment corporation. It's on that test now, we're having a first meeting this Friday. Uh, really get that stimulated and working now. Those are those neighborhoods, CIB, preservation tax, but it's neighborhood association. EGAB is doing a study course right now on analyzing all of the data on our neighborhoods to determine where are the strategic locations of the first projects we need to do to start turning these neighborhoods around. We tell them, ETA, EGAB is kind of a diamond, uh, consultant, it's our consultant, it's, I know, I forgot my name this afternoon. Uh, anyway, it's our consultant, the three fifty-three redevelopment plans, the comprehensive plan that we're working on now. Minnesota District, we're activating Victorian Towers architectural study tomorrow with the preservation commission. That's a contractor we have with all the architects in eleven of Kansas City, where they're going to be discussing four hundred properties in Victorian Towers neighborhood. And they're gonna be giving the streets beginning, I think, Wednesday. But we want to have a meeting, a public meeting tomorrow with residents here at council chambers, so that they know when they see people out on the street taking a picture of their house and writing the clipboard, that they're supposed to be there, they're looking. They're assessing all those properties in the Minnesota District. And then it's also important to be clear on all those lean on city-owned properties. It's a, a bit, uh, detective work as well as legal work. Uh, we're also charged with, you know, alley annex, uh, big neighborhoods in our community, how do we catch new residents with our tax base, and of course, new development in the metro. So that's briefly what we're working on in housing. We've heard the challenge, this is the tool, we're gonna be fans of that challenge. It's also very important to, to develop new suburban neighborhoods, you know, that city limits were, were necessary to create opportunities for developers to build these houses. And then that broad spectrum of housing, and you work from our factory worker to their boss, to their owner. In community development, it's important for developer friendly, we need to get these projects moving, we have created a one-stop solution for construction permits. We travel with management, we're coordinating current prospects, put the right locations in the right place, on the backs of downtown, on highways, on Sixteenth Street. We know where those opportunities are, and what's elsewhere. And we're also liaising with economic development, changer of commerce in downtown. Uh, uh, working with, with, uh, just, uh, industry prospect lead, and she can also reciprocate that with retail. So being developer friendly, what does that mean? We want to facilitate the easier opening and sustaining of businesses today. We want it to be an efficient, fast and practical experience for the developer. We want to assess our barriers and overcome those that allow for assessment and decision-making. And that's decision-making with public works, with, with administration, with different infrastructure entities. We do that through the DRC, which is Development Review Committee. We're a stem of chairs now, and that's where she pulls out utilities and public works providers together to review new projects that are coming to town for construction, make sure that everything is smooth sailing along. Uh, that's bi-weekly, and the hallmark of that program, and I, I passed this first of that in this communication, and I think you know that, uh, they've done very good job with the DRC, keeping everybody involved. Also, I think downtown, in twenty twenty-one, you know, we finished the street state, one of my owners here, it's a big celebration, uh, the campus side, but we need to remain focused on the other sidewalks downtown, the outer lightings, uh, people connections, how do we provide a safe, friendly environment for residents to our living area? Uh, keep in mind, downtown parking lot, for me, was on your list of priorities this year. Evidently, and obviously, you didn't get to that this year with the projects, and, and on your sheets were covered it. But I want to keep that in your, in your sights. Uh, we did the Christmas lighting this year on the Hive Street, want to take a look at that next year. You'll, where does that? next year, where does that expand, do we go down Main Street, do we go on side streets? I would probably keep enhancing that program, continuing with the soft program, with the C B C D, creating special events, not only for downtown, but how do you include the entire community in for a downtown event, right? Ryan is working on this year to shut small businesses on Saturday, but it's not just about the aftermath, it's city-wise, and how we get everybody to participate. So that's about it. And then how do we develop attraction? How do we create attraction of developers to our community? Had a lot of calls about housing recently, what's available, where's the land, where should we keep the price points on our houses to be, Josh Progers, you know, the tables fully left, they could use, selling up, next steps, we've got to think beyond tables too this time. Facility management, that's Doug Roberts and his crew, that's all city-owned non-mortem facilities and facilities, municipal building, for example, public works buildings, animal shelter, private building, facility, beer, board, apartment, etc. Doug, today, took the day off, he took the day off, by nine AM, he had eighteen phone calls in different parts, he needs to be back today. I hope he's caught up by now, he knows he's out. Doug, you're really good at this, you have two maintenance workers, one over the police department, they've taken over for Jay's position. Happening right here. Project being implemented this year, the front plaza, I want to check in with you all on what's the vision to the front plaza. The integrity code is one of your objectives, and I would maintain that, keep that proper within the city, we just heard about Silver Power, if you live across party on South Avenue, West, well, that is slumping off, years of water giving back the land, the big rich, and seeing the chipboard lined it, so we need to tackle that, that has a good source of rock, and we have the concrete wall, give them a spank job, and the animal shelter, that was a lot, and we have a brand, that facility brings a lot of demand on our spankers guys, keep in mind, they're trying to answer any new complaints. With that, I get to the lab, which handles this portion of the residential that's done. So here you are, code enforcement and community department.
Hello.
Hello.
And so the first, I kind of referenced in the teaser, it goes to code enforcement and building department, so the first part is going to be code enforcement, right now we follow the two thousand fifteen international property maintenance code and the two thousand fifteen international residential code. Right now I have three officers, and one supervisor that will be hired soon. We have around eight thousand residential properties, fifteen hundred vacant properties, and eleven hundred commercial properties. A few of the ways that they can, a little bit of code enforcement, and it's one, and it's more of a field, that's where all the danger is going to go. Of course, is a physical hearing exterior appearance, for non-compliant, and we offer administrative hearings for whether he's being an exterior compliant. So recent improvement to this department, the supervision of code enforcement was returned to me about a month ago. We have created a code supervisor decisions that closes on Friday, and then new procedures and policies, so we've moved more from a reactive enforcement to a proactive enforcement, so we call it M D C and a fight advocacy. So we are focusing on voluntary compliance, engagement with new methods. I know on the project, we've been able to clear, we haven't done any of that this year, we just hold it, I would not call them any of that, so I'm hoping to think in on whether you guys would like to see that continue. We are shortening the compliance timeframe to the minimum requirement, we are shortening the procedural timeframe by staying on top of our cases and not letting them get pardoned, and we want to build neighborhood relationships so that they can get accountability and pride in their neighborhood. So these are the goal lines that we're, for this next six, four years, some of them we have already started on. So the first thing is to ensure efficiency, the second thing is to address conventional product offenders, the third is standard operating procedures, which I have started working on that with the enforcement officers. The fourth thing that I would like to see is incentivized training, which is not something that has been done for this department, I would like to set out a training requirement for each of the code enforcement officers, plus myself, plus Deline, the administrative assistant, and then my two building inspectors as well, and with each passing test, you give them a monetary, yes, or, you know, rate. We want to research and develop resources for aid assistance, we see a lot of times, there are people in the community that don't have a resource to fix code compliance issues, whether it be physical disability, monetary disability, we want to be able to compile a list of resources to help those people be able to do those things done. I would also like to not reinvent the wheel, so I think it would be great, once COVID is over, to go visit other code departments, but for now, we can call and talk to them and get ideas. We have also really started collaborating with P D and fire. P D, we utilize unproven, if we feel like there's a situation, we can have them come. If there's a fire, if it's during working hours, a lot of times they will call the enforcement officer in that area, so we look and get access into the property to find issues, and they also need to continue collaboration with public works, which is another way to do our maintenance and our demolition, so having a deeper relationship with that is crucial. So my other reply for code enforcement, I'm going to need a car for the new supervisor because they're going to be doing code enforcement, that's office representative, he'll work as well. The Crown Victoria car, that is the old P D car that air drives interior locations, so I would really like to replace that, and I would like to get a small truck, get down alleys better, it would eliminate the need for public works to be called for a law, a chair, or some small item that it goes work to ask for to pick up and put it in the back of their truck, so public works can have to fix those things up, we can focus them on a larger maintenance. The third thing is professional uniforms, that code enforcement officers presented to me that people sometimes wonder who they are, they're stopping their vehicle, taking pictures, walking around, kind of suspicious-looking activities, so they would like to be dressed in some sort of city logo, so that they can dress themselves as city employees, so they can wear custom logos, and I think we're going to buy them pants as well, if you guys will through that. And then the fourth thing would be incentive training, and this would be both salary increases, and then also the certification test and books required to do the study. So this is a lot of information on one slide, but this is over how many violations have been written, so as you can see, the track violations have gone up this year significantly, you know, basements have significantly gone up again, the grad violations have gone up, dangerous buildings are kind of standing right now, and then because we have started using compake about a year ago, I couldn't pull out whatever vehicle violation, or before I couldn't pull that, so we did four hundred and seventy-one so far this year. And then there's the dollar amount of the postage that's been used, to do those violation letters. Part of the increase in postage has to do with narrowing mail letters for landlord tenant situations, both to the landlord and tenant, and each one gets two letters, so on some violations, there can be four letters sent out for the initial violation. This is the building department, so right now we use the two thousand fifteen international building code, the two thousand fourteen electrical code, and then we use all the other two thousand fifteen I R C, I S C, the residential code, the fire code, the plumbing code. So on the again, we issue building permit, electrical permit, container permit, plumbing permit, and fire permit, we also do special use permits, we do rezoning allocations, so paying some, we do home occupation registration, and then the two boards that we report to here are board of adjustments and spending and survey. Right now, we have five employees, myself, two building instructors, and then half of Deline. So these are my goals for the building department, same thing, talking about incentive training, their training will be much more expensive than the code enforcement officers, I mean, I have an opt in eight-year total training. Again, don't reinvent the wheel, I'd like to visit each other building departments, find out what works, what doesn't work for them. I would like to form some informational handouts, so that you want to build a deck, there's a one-page little P D app on the website that gives you the short skinny of how to build a deck, same thing with roofs, and this one-page informational handout that will help people not have to navigate a whole new concept. Hopefully this year we will be getting the compake to matter of building permits, right now we're only just using that in the code enforcement department. We need to continue collaboration with public works fires and the county health department, we have really done a great job of collaborating with them and being a one-stop shop for building comments, so some developers will submit links to me, I will disturb you, because all of those public works, the fires kind of town health, they will send back all the comments to me, and then I submit the comments back to them to the developer, and so they're having to deal with four different people, they're just dealing with one. And that really has sped up the review process. Then the next thing that we're going to need to do in the coming year is adopt the new twenty twenty-one code, so it's been six years, we're on a six-year rotation, we've get the twenty eighteen I C C code revision, so we would like to adapt the twenty twenty-one, those will be adapted with better revision, so one of the major ones is that in the residential zone, they call for all residences to be sprinkled, that's not a good retirement personality, you will probably remove that, there's other little things like that that are inspection. And then we'd also like some research on allowing for implementation to take that over possibly, we'll take some research. The budget requests are incentive training, which would be salary, C N test, and books, the new twenty twenty-one code book, we would need an entire set for the office, and then each building instructor will need a building code and a residential code, and then the code enforcement officers will need a property maintenance code for each of them. And then I'd also like to get professional uniforms for the building department inspectors as well. So this is just a list of some of the completed construction in twenty twenty, they need when completed, fourth place facilities, our little shoulders built two more apartment buildings out on Green Bowl Park, clinch, post the initiative edition, the probable apartment, the park view of state edition, include custom, Stanley Center, St. Cato, Mr. Ray Allen, our little shoulders also built two additional storage buildings on May, the Lurkina addition, Big O Fire, people events center, big fellowship, and there were twenty-five new residential homes. These projects are still ongoing, they're on location, those are residences, the early childhood development center, the Lotteville Town Home, Shadow State, Deer Brook Building, Katie John House Clinic, Beer Four Flexes, Happy Community Center, Wood Houston, Organic Remedies, the B A Clinic, and then Pet Care, Dana Fitness, Washington Flyer, the here, Heal Credit Home, Starline Repetition, and maybe new residential homes are currently being built. And then this is a lot of numbers, again, about the number of permits that have been issued, we're down a little bit in building permits, but it's only a year to date, our building construction valuation is pretty bad right now, and our permit fees are a little bit down right now. We got to sign significantly more inspection in most of those buildings and electrical for sure, and then the certificate of occupancy has drastically gone up, and the explanation for that is that we now require all businesses, even if they're just relocating from a building to a different building, we require them to have an inspection done by myself and the fire department, before I will issue them a certificate of occupancy, and we now require that certificate to be present to the finance department before they can get their physical license. So we're not just doing new construction anymore, we're doing relocation construction as well. And then this is a graph of a twenty-year view of the construction evaluation. In two thousand eight, that was the high school, and, oh, empty, in two thousand ten, that was the ten minute Manchester, Buffalo Regional Health Fair, and, oh, empty as well, that's why those two years are significantly higher than the rest. And then in two thousand eighteen, I highlighted that, that's what you're forward though, it's two hundred and eighteen million dollars, so if I put that on a graph, it makes the graph, I would get off, so you add two hundred and eighteen million dollars to that. Enough, is there any questions?
I know it's on the dangerous buildings, the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we spend about the same amount of money, but wait, in nineteen, twenty nineteen, we recovered fifteen thousand dollars, and twenty twenty, we recovered nineteen. So that's quite a hefty amount of money to them.
Okay, so I will explain to you in the fifteen thousand dollars, what the homeowner act, we pay for their demolition.
Okay.
So the rest of that money is payment, hardly no one just break a check for the whole demolition of building a fifty or a three dollar animal. So that's where that big number paid from.
I have a question, Devin, on new business licenses, I guess this is something that you all would do, do we have a list of, you know, this is what you have to have in order to receive your business license, like, you have to have your insurance, and you have to have your inspection done, and you have to have so on and so forth?
Oh, and that's something we could, we could really work on with that informational handout.
And giving them also approximate costs of what these things could cost you, depending upon what it is that you're trying to open up, and sideways, and?
I'm not real sure, I would say this license is straight to be, are they even twenty-five dollars?
No, there, yeah, it depends on the type of business, and some of the requirements depend on the type of business too, so, yeah, but, yeah, we can, we can do better at putting some of that in, I mentioned.
One takeaway, can you go to the last building evaluations slide? I gave a presentation of Roger last time, and this is slide one. and this is slightly one of the part of the presentation. But if you look at 2001 through 2020, it is substantial construction, over $775,000. Seven hundred and seventy-five million dollars of construction. Our P M nine, New York was a big chunk of that last year, two hundred plus nine. But I think that says something about today. At the past twenty years, we're approaching a billion dollars of construction. And hopefully with our optimistic industrial development, we can see that number.
Yeah, and that goes back to another graph that we've looked at before where we've done in the last two and a half years, we've created as many jobs in the last two and a half years as we've created in the previous ten years combined. And so that's, that's really what's, uh, some of what's driving our housing being so far behind and where we need to generate our housing.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the next item I have on, it has to do with rezoning. And it's the 417 South Engineer. This came before the planning of zoning commission on the Fourth of November. And after the hearing of the deliberations, the commission itself won't attend nothing because of neither zoning. Uh, the staff had explained in the memo that it's not consistent with the surrounding areas, land usage, and all looking at the best interest of the general public. There were a lot of issues that were involved with this. So it just did not make sense to do the result. I want to bring it to your attention also that the ordinance has stated, is in the affirmative. And that's how it has to be presented because that's how things forward from us. Uh, for council, to sustaining the action of the finding zoning commission, the answer would be devote this down. If you want to change, it would be in the affirmative. Yeah, so that's just changes from. So this is the first one that we have. I've got a couple of other things to go forward with. If there's any questions, we need to direct those to Mr. Simmons or Rayoff, he can answer the question when he gets it. Other than that, it's presented at this point.
Any other questions to council? Does anybody understand the vote on this?
No, there's a deal, no terms of that. Yes, it is. For the vote to consider the result.
And it was recommendation to deny the result.
Yeah, the recommendation telling that finding zoning is a valid.
Carleen, read the orders, please.
Bill number 2020 dash two oh eight. An ordinance granted for rezoning applications by Kenneth and Mary C. Allen for property located in 417 Fountain Junior Avenue from C one Local Business District to City Free Commercial Business District in the city of today's third.
Second read.
Second. All in favor?
Uh huh.
Opposed?
Bill number 2020 dash two oh eight. An ordinance granted for rezoning applications by Kenneth and Mary C. Allen for property located in 417 Fountain Junior Avenue from C one Local Business District to C three Commercial Business District in the city of today's third.
Final passage.
Second. More complaints?
Lynn?
No.
Lee?
No.
Olden?
No.
Dalton?
No.
Marcus?
No.
Richardson?
No.
Do you think?
Yes, you didn't know. Correct.
Cross?
No.
And Foster?
Yes.
So there's eighty now.
And you're on, the next one I have has to be rezoning also. It's about four for our third J. Foster. Eight for, we just went through, we got all stuff saying that I'm zoning, we just. It has to do with the Mitchell Road property and the rezoning from M two, industrial to C three. And, uh, this is what we just passed. We did earlier on that inventory. Now we're asking for it to be, uh, rezoned fully.
Any questions, council?
Uh, some of that property that was behind the bank in the visual for some unknown reason that was, was in the city limits.
That's correct.
Is it back in the city limits now?
Well, we just, we did an annexation, yes.
Okay.
And then, uh, this was rezoning the land that was around it that was already in the city.
I see, okay. All right, thank you.
But the property that was annexed was also annexed and brought in as C three. Yeah, C three. So Carleen, read your orders, please.
Bill number 2020 dash two oh nine. An ordinance granted for rezoning applications by Ferante, Rafa, Agent for Zuckery, Izoa, Zolita, and Tafiana, Izoa, former property located at Mitchell Road and West Broadway, where from M two and industrial district to C three Commercial Business District in the city of today's third.
Second read.
Second. All in favor?
Uh huh.
Opposed?
Bill number 2020 dash two oh nine. An ordinance granted for rezoning applications by Ferante, Rafa, Agent for Zuckery, Izoa, Zolita, and Tafiana, Izoa, former property located at Mitchell Road and West Broadway, where from M two and industrial district to C three Commercial Business District in the city of today's third.
Final passage. Second.
More complaints?
Lynn?
Yes.
Olden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Well, you have also, you also have a map on the night. What did the members time in my life, I don't know here, have, has to do with the Amtrak depot. You recall that in October, we decided we would take the train to wherever Amtrak do from the S A D tie. Uh, Felton, I'll give you a little bit of time and you explain how we totally reserve money's over and over.
Yeah, there was, uh, goodness, eighty-five hundred, eighty-seven hundred dollars worth of money that was set in reserves. There's, uh, the oats, um, revenues come, coming from there. Uh, those are restricted to do oats, uh, rehabs, maintenance items, those kinds of things. There is plenty, or there's quite a few backed up or, or, uh, maintenance items on the list. And so basically this budget pulls that eighty-seven hundred dollars plus what we expect to see, receive for the remainder of this fiscal year, do all of those. So that was ninety-four hundred dollars, somewhere around in there. Uh, the rest of it is, uh, is primarily utilities. Uh, what we have discussed with oats is that they possibly will want to take over that extra space, which will at the very least eliminate that, that, the utilities for that space. Um, and then, uh, also add some, some revenues to it. So we really believe that if we can accomplish that, we will come to a breakeven, uh, going forward. But right now we're, uh, we're kind of catching up on some of those things. And we did not include the extra, uh, the extra lease from oats until we can get that pulled together.
Now, this requires two parts, a resolution and ordinance. So which first?
You make a motion for the resolution?
Motion. We need to read it first, sir.
Read, would you read your resolution, please?
Resolution number nineteen sixteen. Your resolution of the City Council in the city of today's third operating an increase in expenditures in the, in the fiscal year 2021 regarding related to Missouri Pacific Railroad evil.
Welcome to a third.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed?
And the second document is bill number 2020 dash two TM. An ordinance updating the budget for the fiscal year 202021 regarding Missouri Pacific Railroad evil.
Second read.
All in favor?
Uh huh.
Opposed?
Bill number 2020 dash two TM. An ordinance updating the budget for the fiscal year 202021 regarding Missouri Pacific Railroad evil.
Wow, thank you.
More complaints?
Olden?
Yes.
Dawson? Marcus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. And that's all I have at this time. I'd like to thank all of the, give their presentations tonight.
Carleen, uh, appointments, please?
To members of the City Council from Mayor John Gady, this is a new appointment to the Police Department Board and Celebration 405 West Henry Street for Black Year Term starting June 2025.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Uh huh.
Opposed?
Right.
Anybody from the, uh, State Council, the State Minister to make a comment tonight? About, I don't know, there's things on the.
Things are low. We do have, you can't, they're going on, but we have a lot of positive things happening within our city.
Yeah, a couple of things if you had not seen yet. Uh, the, uh, Chamber of Commerce has sent out that the Christmas parade has been canceled. So, um, disappointing news, but, uh, possibly the right thing to do with the COVID, uh, was basically what they were concerned about. Um, but along those lines, uh, I would like to remind everybody buy local, um, as you start your shopping. And, uh, I think John mentioned that, uh, that we're putting together some stuff, bringing in and just pulling together some stuff for the Small Business Saturday and also the, the Shop Local on the, the Black Friday. So, um, buy local, it's key. Small businesses needed more this year than, than even we're cast, so. I want to say that the, the Fornells are going to have their Thanksgiving event. It's going to be a little different this year. They're going to be, you can be able to sit in your car and watch it, listen to Charles on K D R. You know, or you can walk up and watch it. Whatever you're, if you like doing that evening.
Don't do it on Facebook too.
I, I don't do Facebook, then that's okay.
Sorry.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure, come on up here, you can. You can state your name and address if you don't mind.
My name is Susan D. Mill. I'm in here about seven and a half years ago. And I wanted to make an announcement. Well, first I want to tell you I love you so.
Well, thank you.
I love you, officers, firemen, and you take such good care of the homes and ones that get on drugs. And I'm trying to, and I would like to thank you for that. I'm, I'm making an announcement tonight. I've been campaigning for President Trump. Yes, I'm an independent. And a year and a half ago, I'm press charges appeared today against Nancy Pelosi, Josh Shapiro. You ever met him? Uh, I'm starting a class action suit. It's not a lawsuit. It's a work of fire and seat. Because they're, they're colored under diplomatic. Which I don't believe in that. They made a mistake. They need to make those decisions. So I'm, I'm starting, I have to give a word. We're going to have a class action fire. So there will be a dramatic community there. And I'm working with them. Prosecutor, they're just prosecuting. If anybody's interested, if we all press charges into, if you're like, this, this was a loss for the violence, my young mom, then I think we have a right to, uh, and I think we have the right to press charges.
I appreciate your coming. I appreciate you liking the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now I make a motion this time to go into the full session.
Thank you.
More complaints? Okay. If you would, leave them there on a, on a table and if somebody's interested, they can certainly pick them up. We'll have.
Here we are. Olden?
Here.
So.
Yes.
Richardson?
Yeah.
Foster?
Foster? Yes.
And Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody want? Just a minute.
Can I get a, uh, link for closed door?
Yeah, I was just thinking that, that I, I didn't do a link here. Um, let me shut off the recording here.